Can we all be upstanding for the prayer?
Almighty God, we who are gathered together in council pledge ourselves to work in harmony for the welfare and development of our rural city. Guide us, we pray, in our deliberations. Help us to be fair in our judgement and wise in our actions, so that prosperity and happiness shall be with a lot of our people. Amen. I'd like to acknowledge the traditional owners and custodians of the land, which now comprises the Mildura Rural City and Municipality. We pay our respects to elders past and present and celebrate and respect the continuing cultures and acknowledge the memories of their ancestors. Thanks for your time. Good evening and welcome to the May Ordinary Meeting of Council this Thursday 26th of May 2022. I welcome councillors, management and staff and members of the public that join us here tonight. I also welcome those members of the public viewing the live stream online or watching this recording at a later time. This meeting is being livestreamed on council's website. The meeting recording will be published on council's website within 48 hours of this meeting concluding. Tonight at item 17, we'll be considering four confidential reports. The livestream will conclude once council resolve to move into confidential business. This aspect of the recording will not be made available on our website. Thank you. I'll move on to item three, which is those who are present. Tonight we have councillor Ian Arnie who is in virtually, so can we please say if you can hear and see us, councillor Arnie?
Yeah, thank you, Mr Mayor. I can see and hear clearly. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Jason Maudica, councillor Glen Milne, councillor Mark Ekel, councillor Stefano De Perry, councillor Helen Healy, councillor Troy Bailey. Also, please note that councillor Bailey has a pre-existing important work commitment and may need to leave the meeting early tonight. We also have in the room CEO Martin Horson, acting general manager community Mark Jenkins, acting general manager development Daryl Morgan, general manager of corporate Chris Parham and manager of governance and performance Larnie Bedd. Before I move on to apologies, I'd just like to say that this meeting has a lot in the agenda and there's a lot to go through and there's some fairly serious topics as well to be considered. Hopefully, we have robust and honest conversation in the chamber, but make sure it's a respectful conversation. And also, there may be conflicts of interest that pop up. That's nothing to be worried about. It shows you're a part of the community and we should acknowledge that and move on. So I move on to item four, apologies and absences, and there are no apologies for this evening's meeting. Item five, confirmation of minutes. We have the following minutes be confirmed tonight. Ordinary meeting of council minutes for the meeting held on 28th of April 2022. Confidential meeting of council minutes for the meeting held on 28th of April 2022. Do I have a mover? Councillor Milne, do I have a seconder? Councillor Healy, would anyone like to speak against the motion? Would anyone like to speak for the motion? I'll now put the motion to vote. All those in favour? The motion is carried. Item six, confirmation of council auspice meetings. We have records for two council auspice meetings to note tonight. They are from the following meetings. Old Aerodrome Sporting Complex Advisory Board, 6th of April 2022, and the council forum 12th of May 2022. Do I have a mover for that motion? Councillor Milne, do I have a seconder for that motion? Councillor Ekel, would anyone like to speak against the motion? Would anyone like to speak for the motion? I'll now put the motion to vote. All in favour? The motion is carried. Item seven, notification of absence. Would any councillors like to notify council of upcoming absences? There are none. Item eight, Mirror Report, 8.1 Mirror Report, April 2022. Recommendation that council note the contents of this report. Do I have a mover for this motion? Councillor Healy, do I have a seconder? Councillor Milne, would anyone like to speak against the motion? Would anyone like to speak for the motion? I'll now put the motion to vote. All in favour? The motion is carried. Item nine, councillor reports, 9.1 councillor reports, April 2022. I invite any councillors who would like to speak to their reports to raise their hands. We might just go around the room, starting with councillor Reynolds.
Thank you through you, Mr Mayor. I'll just start off with a question that I was asked by a community member regarding the recycling of face masks. So no doubt, everybody has seen face masks on roads and on footpaths and around ducks' necks and all sorts of things. So naturally, people are wondering what can we do about this? Where can we put them? So I had actually spoken to Integrated Recycling about this problem and they told me that the problem with the face masks is the material that they're made out of. The material that they're made out of is difficult to recycle. There is a biohazard associated with collecting the masks and using them after that. And in fact, because they are made to be thrown away, they're not actually made with that circular economy in mind, with recycling in mind. So they are a big issue. Now, it turns out that Woolies actually had a cylinder that they were collecting the masks in, but that cylinder then overflowed and whoever was providing the cylinder didn't come and collect that cylinder again. So I don't know who was doing that and I thank Daryl for getting back to me. He did a little bit of research and the staff did a little bit of research about what they could do with the masks and where we could sort of take it a little bit further. I think we're going to do a bit more research in that area. I don't think that recycling the masks is going to be something that we can do. The other thing is the economy of scale and the streaming of the masks. Like, at the moment with glass and with plastics, we collect that, we've got big volumes of it and we can stream it into some sort of recycling pathway, but we don't have that streaming of the masks at the moment, so that's also an issue. But if we can find something to do with them, then we will and we'll keep looking at options that we can come up with there. Second thing I'd like to talk about is that I attended the Sustainability and Infrastructure Conference in Melbourne over the last couple of days on Tuesday and Wednesday, and that was really inspiring. There's some fantastic work going on in infrastructure in Australia. There is some incredible technological advances that we're making as far as making sure that we're looking at the whole cycle of carbon when we're thinking about building things out of concrete, using glass to put in roads, which we're already doing here. So it was really interesting when they were talking about councils, you know, at the cutting edge of the recycling and keeping their carbon emissions low and they were doing that by using things like glass and crushed concretes in roads and we are already doing that here. So in a way, Mildura is sort of punching above its weight already in those areas and that's, you know, credit to the staff at Mildura Rural City Council for getting that stuff going. But it also brought home to me how disadvantaged we are here and frankly, how we are discriminated against in many ways in North West Victoria. All of the examples that were talked about were in the city. All of the things that we were talking about as far as how to make public transport better for people were examples that we would love to be able to talk about in this city, but we can't because we are simply not at the same level with our public transport as they are in cities. You know, they were talking about having more trees so that people can have lovely leafy walks to their covered bus stops and things. Wouldn't that be nice to be able to have something like that here? But the funding simply isn't available and when we talk about people in cities, we talk about equity and fairness and people having access. When I talked about the possibility of having these things in Mildura, we started talking about economics and money. So unfortunately, equity and fairness ends at Ballarat and Bendigo when it comes to public transport and infrastructure, and I'd really like to see that change. And I was really gratified to see Ali Kappa bringing it up in state parliament yesterday. And she and I are going to continue to fight for getting better public transport, 20-minute communities at the same level of service that people get in Melbourne. We're going to be fighting for that in Mildura. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Reynolds. Councillor Healy?
Thank you, Mayor Wood. Firstly, I'd just like to acknowledge that today is National Sorry Day and that it was established in 1998, one year after the Bringing Them Home report. And it was actually established because the Prime Minister at the time refused to apologise and with 200,000 other people, I marched across Sydney Harbour Bridge in the year 2000, demanding an apology and to show solidarity. And happily, in 2008, Prime Minister Rudd moved the motion of the apology and it was passed unanimously in both houses of parliament. So today, we remember that struggle and commemorate the mistreatment of our country's indigenous peoples and the ongoing journey of transformation of our relationship to country through the recognition of the true history of Australia and our shared, rich cultural heritage. I'd also like to commend ABSE Mildura Swan Hill for their fantastic coverage this morning and the broad range of interviews they did to commemorate National Sorry Day. On a happy note, in August last year, I was approached by a local constituent, Peter McWilliams, and then later in February councillor Ekel and I met with him and Joy Evans and a number of other people who'd requested that the band Rotunda in Deacon Avenue be a location to honour our music icons. And at the time, they were wanting to acknowledge the recently departed Jeff Evans. Well, I'm delighted to report that a fitting tribute memorial is being designed and will be installed in or around the band Rotunda and a nomination process will be established to identify significant members of our music community to be recognised. Perhaps it can include the legendary rhythm rockets and the magnificent soprano diva Siobhan Stagg. And next, I'd like to acknowledge the receipt of a letter from Anoyan constituent, Lorraine Hickmott, regarding some lovely compliments about our entry to the city in Deacon Avenue, but also unfortunately, a concerning issue about some of our local facilities. However, I'm assured and so is Mrs Hickmott, that it was acted upon as a legitimate complaint and she has been responded to appropriately about the situation, which was largely out of our control. And I'd like to thank the staff for the speedy response to that issue. Thank you. On May 27th, I attended the official celebration of the gazetting of Mount Dispersion as an Aboriginal place. And it was actually established on May 27, 2020, but the celebration couldn't occur because of COVID. And that was on the 184th anniversary of the massacre carried out by members of Major Mitchell's survey members. It was a wonderful day and it was led mostly by the Pearce family out at Houston. Schoolchildren were involved, landowners, Wetworthshire representatives, community members. And I particularly acknowledge the worker Sophia Pearce to bring that day to fruition. Lastly, as an official council observer, I've attended a lot of Arts Mildura meetings and I'd like to extend my congratulations, and I'm sure yours as well, on the appointment of Sonia Hodge as the Chair of Arts Mildura, not only the first woman chair of Arts Mildura, but the first Aboriginal chair. Already, her thoughtful and inspired thinking is motivating the new board and staff and in a few weeks, on June 16th, they will be announcing an exciting programme that will mark a new beginning in our rich cultural life. So watch this space. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Healy. Councillor Milne?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. My report will be fairly brief. As councillor for infrastructure, I was actually quite excited to hear that the federal government, the previous federal government, should they have been re-elected, were going to provide $280,000 to upgrade Castle's Crossing Road at Nangalock. As we know, that road serves as, well, I think it is, the biggest dried fruits property in Australia. And indeed, our farms need roads that are fit for purpose at the front gate. You know, the first kilometre is important. So that may or may not be, hopefully, that might be picked up by the new government or by the state government because it remains an issue and it's a safety issue. There's been a few accidents and I think one death on Castle's Crossing Road, so hopefully we'll see that. Also, I'd like to mention, well, we've had more rain. There were some issues with some drains, which we've got an answer to, Caradoc and 14th in particular, where the citizens were quite concerned about what was happening there. And council has that in the budget and a plan for that, so that'll be good news for them. I think they wrote to, one of the locals wrote to all of the councillors. And I'm also looking forward to a report on drainage because it still remains an issue and we need to make sure we can do whatever we can to fix the drainage problems that still exist around the city and indeed across the whole of our council area. So I think Anoyan had a few problems last night, they got a pretty heavy downpour, so hopefully we'll see that sometime soon. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Milne, and hopefully our local MPs contingent advocate for existing infrastructure like you were talking about. I'll just go to councillor Arnie. Do you have anything to talk to your report?
Yes, please, Mr Mayor. In the last month, I requested some information from GM or acting GM, Daryl Morgan, regarding the Meridian Road. And I'm very pleased that work is going to progress very quickly with regards to the second stage of applying bitumen along that road and hopefully that will then lead to us finalising the entire sealing of that road by the end of next year. I also requested GM Morgan take a look at, or acting GM Morgan, take a look at a very dangerous bend on the Warrimah North Road, which will be attended to. And I'm being really pleased with the responses that I've been getting from the GMs. I've had a number of conversations with, I think, GM Mark Jenkins as well, and I'm really pleased that they take the time to provide very succinct answers, but also at times, I guess, are willing to allow me to expand and extrapolate and go off on tangents and I appreciate their time and effort very much. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Arnie. I'll now move to deputy mayor Maudica.
Thank you, Mayor Wood. I'd just like to acknowledge the Red Cliffs and Teneri. That's all, I was lucky enough to be out there because the mayor was away. Just acknowledge the committee. Councillor Milne was on the committee, very supportive of the group out there, the money that MRCC have supported them. And it was a long time coming too, councillor Milne, because that was put off for a year too, wasn't it? Or was, yes. So once again, fully supportive of the Red Cliffs community. It was a great day. Councillor Milne was everywhere, actually. He was on the radio, he was on the stand, everywhere he went, there he was, which is a great thing because he's represented that part of the municipality for a very long time and very well. Just acknowledging his support from the committee and everybody that turned up and I believe a lot of people had come from capital cities in a way to be involved with Red Cliffs, which is a very unique example of the colonizing, the colonized part of our region through the soldier settler experience. So it was a great day. And the other one was just the Easter, just acknowledging everyone on the Easter weekend, from everything Mildura Rural City Council supplies and funding to all the groups that got together and just put on a cracker of a weekend. It was phenomenal. I was out on the Ski 100 on the Sunday morning and it was absolutely fantastic. It's a huge event. It brings hundreds and hundreds of people and so much economy is turned over and that's complemented by all the other events that go around it. So it was wonderful to be involved with that at Easter and great to see our town moving out of the difficulties of COVID and engaging in some form of normality. And the third one for me was I attended the Sonrazia Living in the Malley Climate Community Forum the last, over last month, which was very refreshing. I was in Swan Hill, there's a lot of dynamic people there discussing climate mitigation, water, how we, you know, building, how we build and how we do, do what we do and how we prepare for the change that will come. And it's really good to see that it's not just Mildura that's doing it, it's across the Malley and we get invited and it was lovely to turn up and it was a great day with lots of quality information. Thank you.
Thank you, deputy mayor Maudica. Councillor Ekel?
Yes, thank you, Mr Mayor. And once again, as the major events councillor, I was going to say the same thing, deputy mayor Maudica, about Easter, it certainly was a magnificent weekend and it just, once again, impresses upon us all how important the events are to this, to this community. And also, we have to take our head off, I think, to the events unit and our strategy of last year or the year before in regards to rolling over grants so that make sure that grant money was still going to be alive and, once again, giving the opportunity to event holders to run their events and the stimulation that that did around Easter was just absolutely enormous. I just want to, just for a moment, just touch on what councillor Healy said in regards to the Rotunda because Peter McWilliams, who she mentioned, isn't well at the moment and our thoughts and prayers are with Peter. I'd like to say that because he's been a wonderful contributor to this community. Mr Mayor, this coming weekend is the Mildura Day Weekend, celebrating 135 years of Mildura being the first irrigation colony in Australia and what contribution the Chafis and the community at large at that particular time did for setting up this colony. The main reason for raising this, and I'll just run off a couple of the events that are going to be happening over the weekend, is that unfortunately, due to the rain, once again, we find Pumps Road is out of commission. I had an urgent phone call with Ron Lehman, who is the secretary of the Psychic Pumps Historical Reserve Committee and also with the Steamies, Steam Preservation Society, who run the pumps. And we had to make the unfortunate decision once again of cancelling an event at Psychic Pumps. You know, it really is disgraceful that we have a road that leads into one of the prime tourism destinations in Sonrazia with the CMA about to spend hundreds of thousands on a wonderful Indigenous project down there. We have, Bruce's Bend full of houseboats and campers and we have the running of the pumps, which was going to bring in $600, the Chaper Trail reference group, of which I'm chair, as you know, were donating $600 to the Steamies to run that particular day. The Sister Cities Association, we're giving them $200, they're going to run a beautiful jaffa thing that they do each year to bring back memories of the past and Bob Walton is going to have the games with the kids that they had at the turn of the century. You know, it's just so upsetting because this happens all the time, like five, we only have five running days a year at Psychic Pumps for the Steamies to raise their money. I don't know if people know, but also to have a ticket to run the pumps these days, a boiler certificate, there's not too many people that have that and will give their time from a volunteer's perspective to put it in, to put the work in there. So it really is disappointing and this is just another day that has been called off. Matthew Guy was down there with me and he's made a pledge, the upcoming elections and our local member, Ali Kappa, has also raised it in parliament, but it all seems to fall on deaf ears. But hopefully, you know, one day it might happen. But that aside, on Monday evening, and there's only a few tickets left...
You need to wind it up, councillor Ekel. You're out of time.
Yeah, right. Monday evening, we have an event at the Langtree Hall and on Tuesday, on Mildura Day, we have a riverfront ramble, which is a fabulous tourist opportunity that we have created and Bob Walton will be taking people that want to participate in that from 11 o'clock along the riverfront to give a wonderful description of that particular part of the river at that, in the 1880s, 1890s. So that's available and I hope that people will go down there and support that. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Councillor De Perry? No? Councillor Bailey? Okay, I'll now put the council, note the contents of this report. Do I have a mover for the motion? Mayor Maudica, deputy mayor Maudica, sorry. Do I have a seconder? Councillor Milne? Does anyone like to speak against the motion? Anyone like to speak for the motion? I'll now put the motion to vote. All in favour? The motion is carried. Item 10, we move on to responses to councillor questions and the next item of business is report, responses to councillor questions. Councillor De Perry, are you happy with the response you received to a question about answer efficiency to community questions?
Yes, Mr Mayor.
Thank you. I'll now move to item 11, questions from councillors and there are none. Item 12, notices of motion. The next item of business is notice of motion, in which we have four motions that councillors have put forward. Item 12.1 is housing crisis, which was councillor Healy moved the following motion, which was seconded by councillor De Perry and the motion is move the Mildura Ru, and I'll read this out in full because I think it's important for the motions to be read out in full. And I'll read this out in full because I think it's important for the motions to be read out in full. Move that Mildura Rule City Council declares a housing crisis in respect to housing availability and affordability and social housing and recommend that council. A, write to federal government. One, to assist particularly regional communities to find a balanced approach to short and long term rentals. Item two, lobby regarding taxation's reform and housing affordability. B, make a commitment to the Everybody's Home campaign. C, seek collaborative partnerships with our fellow neighbouring councils to address the issues. And request, D, that request a report be presented to council with the required actions necessary. To mitigate the worst impacts of this housing crisis. Would anyone like to speak against the motion? Well, the mover and seconder has already been. So mover councillor Healy and seconder councillor De Perry. Would anyone like to speak against the motion?
I've got a couple of questions.
You've got a couple of questions councillor Millen?
In regard to part D, has there been a costing? On that, I mean, that's a huge amount of work. Governments have tried to solve this problem for years and. What's it going to cost?
Just clarification, Mr Mayor. Oh, I see. Thank you.
C E O Martin Horsen?
Sure, Mr Mayor. Obviously, this is a motion coming from councillor Healy. And it's up for council to consider that motion. In terms of costs, it's a bit. We don't actually know until we get into the actual investigation. So it would be impossible to sort of quantify. Quantify that at this stage. However, if there was any significant costs. We'd obviously have to come back to council because it would be a financial matter. And notice of motion is difficult to consider that if we don't know the cost. I think, I think reading the. The intent of the motion is to assess what's possible and what role we could play. But also work with our networks, with our meetings and with other councillors initially. However, if there was a significant impact on the budget, we would have to come back to council.
Anything else councillor Millen?
Yeah, probably just a technical point where it says recommend that council. Probably shouldn't be asked, but I might, I'll speak against the motion.
Yep. Okay, we'll start the debate with councillor Healy.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I think the reason for this motion is adequately outlined in the background document that accompanied the motion. The basis for me putting up this motion is explained there. The feedback I've had in the community regarding, A. Access, accessibility to housing and the cost. And secondly, the amount of social housing and accessibility in that regard. I also think as a nation and as a municipality, we're at a crossroads and we have to ask. What kind of country do we want to live in? And we're only as strong as our weakest link. And if we're going to have prosperity, we need to take everybody with us. And with this motion, I am talking about a basic human right, which is. That everybody has a place they can call home. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Healy. Councillor De Perry?
Thank you, Mr Mayor, and I think that the motion is crystal clear. It is a call to arms, if you like. It's expressing an intention. Surely no one here has got. At this point in time, either the budget or the capacity to resolve a problem of such magnitude. The intent, however, is to highlight the fact that we do have a problem here whilst our city is growing. And growing steadfastly and there is a section of the economy which are of course very strong. And are generating a lot of wealth. There are also people who unfortunately are not. In a position to acquire a house, especially now with interest rates going up. I think, as I said, that it is a motion expressing an intention. We have two options as a council. Either to remain silent and pretend that nothing is happening, that everything is on kidory. Or sometimes we have to lift a lid on an issue and say, well, we have an issue. And starting to think about that issue is the first step. Towards finding eventually a solution, if not putting a lot of. Of pressure on, we're pressured to God, state and federal governments and ourselves, in fact. And one day see some kind of a solution forming on the horizon. But if we do nothing. We'll just, we'll just continue to have a very big problem with rents going up and people being homeless. Thank you.
Thank you councillor De Perry. Councillor Millen, would you like to speak against the motion?
Yeah, thank you, Mr Mayor. Firstly, I guess I would like to acknowledge that there is a huge problem with homelessness. I guess my question is, is whether it's our role to lead. The charge on that, given the amount of organisations that are in Mildura. You've got MAS, Malley Family Care, Madass and others that deal with homelessness and are working on that issue. Yes, I think council should be involved, but I did mention before that governments have tried to solve this problem. In fact. Bob Hawke said in June 1987. That by 1990, no Australian child will be living in poverty. It hasn't quite worked out that way. He got off script. It was supposed to be no Australian child need live in poverty. But that's 35 years ago and we've still got the problem. And I'm wondering, you know, what are we prepared to do as a council? I've got information here, but, you know, we've got rules and regulations that we follow. We sort of maintain a minimum of land. Well, land that we see as being needed, required for housing. But that in itself, the rules that we have to abide by actually drive up the price of land. I'm wondering what else we can do. We used to have building societies for first home buyers at 1% interest. And people could buy a $30,000 house. They won't even buy the garage, I don't think now, but you could do that. We had owner builders who built mud brick houses and all sorts of things and that was run by Maydeck. So my question is, if we go down this path. How far are we prepared to move at looking at removing roadblocks that stop people from maybe building their houses? Are they allowed to build a smaller house? Are we going to have smaller blocks of land? What are we going to do as a council to assist in this? And. I guess my biggest problem is with part D. Is, I've worked with homeless people, I've been on the boards of various groups that deal with housing. And I know what it costs. And when I look around, I look at our reports that are coming up later. Our renewal gap, you know, where we spend our money. I don't know that we should be leading. Yes, if we could get all the other councils to put in. As is recommended to work with neighbouring councils. Maybe that would help. Or just lobby the government to actually pay for a report on behalf. Of those groups that deal with homeless people because it is a problem. But I don't know that it's one that we can lead and fund and actually come out with an answer economically. Because work like this, Vicos and others have been doing it and spending hundreds of thousands of dollars on it for decades. And they still haven't got an answer to the problem. And it may be far broader and wider than just building houses because that's not going to change the accommodation issue. We've got to have a massive change in our community in regard to domestic violence. And family violence and other problems that actually create the homelessness. It's not necessarily a shortage of houses. There's many other issues. So, yeah, I just. I support the intent. I just wonder about the mechanics and the cost. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Millen. Would anyone like else to speak for the motion? Councillor Reynolds?
Thank you, Mayor Wood. As the primary planning authority in this region, we are going to be dealing with this problem whether we like it or not. This is a problem that is not going to go away and that we are going to be having to deal with. So with the declaration of a crisis, we can now start to think about it. In that way and we can start to plan for it in that way as a planning authority. We can start to think about. Working with developers and bringing those groups of people together who are involved in this area and working with them, working with MAS, working with the developers, working with the people who work in this area. And start thinking about if we're going to deal with this, where are these people going to go? Where are these houses going to go? And think about how they're going to live in the future. So this needs a lot of thinking about and with this. Motion, we can start thinking about it in that way. We're in a position where we can bring people together over this and we already have in so many other areas. There's no reason why we can't play that role. In the housing crisis area. I can't believe that anybody would seriously suggest that we do nothing. Just because it's hard, doesn't mean that we should throw our hands in the air. And let it be somebody else's problem. The answer to it, what are we going to do?
I don't think I suggest that we do nothing, Mr Mayor.
Both parties were quite, what was the reason for the point of order?
I didn't suggest that we throw our hands in the air and do nothing.
Yep, I'll take that on board and retract that. Yep, that's fine. You can move on councillor Reynolds. Thank you.
Whatever we can do within our power is the answer to what should we do and what can we do. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Reynolds. Would anyone else like to speak against the motion? Would anyone else like to speak for the motion? I'll now put it back to councillor Healy to close the debate.
Thank you, Mayor Wood, and thank you for the contributors to that, which I found most to be very supportive. I just think as a councillor and as a councillor, I know I have a core role to play as a councillor, but I very much see. Our role as advocacy and in lobbying as a really, really important one and showing that leadership in our community of acknowledging when there are problems. That we're going to step up and look at these problems seriously. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Healy. I'll now put the motion to vote. All in favour? The motion is carried. Thank you and thank you for the debate. I'll now move on to 12.2, finance assistant grants. And this motion was moved by councillor Monica and was seconded by councillor Reynolds. The motion moved that Mildura Rural City Council, one, write to the Prime Minister, leader of the opposition and member of Malley. Requesting that the federal government, one, preserve financial assistance grants as the major source of federal funding to local government. And two, strengthen the business case to support calls to restore federal assistance grants to 1%. And three, restore the federal assistance grants funding lost in 2014 to 2015. Indexation freeze as the first phase in restoring federal assistance grants funding levels. Two, endorse that the motion of submission to the June 2022 Municipal Associations of Victoria's. State council meeting as per table one of this report and submits it to Mav by Friday, the 27th of May, 2022. And three, write to the peak bodies, ALGA, Mav, VLGA and other peak bodies. Advocating to increase the Australian Government's recognition of local government. As a trusted partner by, A, encouraging councils to acknowledge the value of financial assistance grants and B. Supporting state and territory associations to engage councils in a united campaign to achieve 1% assistance grants. Do I have a mover? Deputy Mayor Monica and the seconder councillor Reynolds? Would anyone like to speak against the motion?
Got a question.
Councillor Millen?
The forward, is this going to be, go like the background, will that go with? The motion to the Mav? Because. In the second paragraph, it talks about the local government derives nearly 90% of its revenue from its own sources. Then about down in three, four, about paragraph six. There's consistently raised more than 80%. And our own local council, I'd point out, in 2019 to 20. Government grants were 26 and a bit percent of our income. In 2021, they were 40.6% of our income. So we've done fairly well, but.
I'll just, I'll just get, I'm just wondering, I'll just get the general manager of corporate Chris Palm to confer those stats.
Thank you through the mayor and thank you for the question. The, I guess what we could put forward is slight clarification in regards to the operating as opposed to capital grants. When we talk about the financial assistance grants coming through the federal government administered by the Victorian Grants Commission, they're of an operational nature, not of a capital nature. However, when looking at our budget figures, that would indicate a combined capital and operational figure. So we can clarify that within the submission, absolutely.
Anything else councillor Millen? That's fine, thanks. Would anyone like to speak against the motion? Would anyone like to speak for the motion? Yep. Deputy Mayor Monica?
I'd also been discussing a couple of things with councillor Arnie and there's a few edits that I'll pass on. Ian, and thank you for that input and thank you to councillor Millen. I just think this is really important and it's well picked up by councillor Millen that different councils do. Different depending on their broader political situation, whether it's a swinging seat, whether it's a teal seat. What this is really asking is what's our population, what's our size, what's the generic amount of money that the federal government should pass on to? All 537 LGAs for some equity rather than using a political arm of council, use the bureaucracy to make independent decisions to fund in an equitable way. So the report is there, there's lots of information in it. It is a broad brush stroke. Both Mav and Elga have been. Calling for this increase to 1%, which had dropped down to 0.55% of the federal budget. For quite a long time and I just think it's good for Mildura Rules to get your city council to get in behind that. And encourage other councils in the region to do the same thing. Thank you, Mayor Wood.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Monica. Would anyone else like to speak for the motion? Councillor De Perry?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I just want to make a general comment. I think my little experience in our local government. We are all far too kind and far too meek. I mean, it's just outrageous that we're not funded properly. And we have to start raise our voice. I think we are in this country, I'm indulged, let me indulge in a tiny bit of rhetoric. We have the economy that just falls just behind by a fraction, the economy of Russia. We are one of the 12 most developed countries in the world. Nobody here should be going without. Housing, without hospital, without education and indeed without infrastructure for local government. Now, it is not jarring and it's not aggressive, to state the truth, in the manner that I am. So I support this motion 100% and I think we have to pursue, pursue vigorously through whichever means and through whichever. Channels available to us. And I invite the media, if they're here tonight, to actually highlight this problem. We are being absolutely ignored. And then, of course, the ultimate result is that we have to squeeze our own municipality and we have to cut services. Or we have to increase rates when with a flick of a hand. We, the Commonwealth Government and the state government should provide the appropriate level of funding for local government. They find that suddenly, when there is an election, you hear billions of dollars floating around. There's 180 billion or something like that. Some submarines that will happen in the year of whoop-whoop, you know, when I'll long be dead. And they'll be obsolete by the time. The best defence of a country is making its population. Strong, healthy and wealthy, not wasting money on, 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 on things, on political promises and then ignoring. The fundamentals. So here, here, and thank you for raising the issue.
Thank you councillor De Perry. Would anyone else like to speak for the motion? Sorry, councillor Arnie?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Councillor Monica or Deputy Mayor-
Councillor Modica or deputy mayor Modica and I have spoken a few times about this and including the fact that both of us disagree that at any stage you should have to become a member of a political party or pay a huge fee to get into a room with a politician in order to try and guarantee funding for your municipality. It just makes basic sense, monetary sense, that we should be able to cover our everyday costs, our municipal costs, without having to continually go back year after year to our rate payers, asking them to fund it. Councillor Modica can mention the amount of tax that we charge, the amount of services we provide, and we're doing a huge job. We're doing it on behalf of the entire country. And if we can provide, and correct me please if I'm wrong, councillor Modica, I believe it's 26%, is it, for 3% of the taxation?
Pretty close, mate.
Thank you. Which then demonstrates to me that the federal and state governments aren't carrying their weight. They're just not helping us at all, not to the extent that they should be. So this makes complete sense to me. And I thank you very much, deputy mayor Modica, for bringing to our attention. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Arnie. I'll now pass on to councillor Eccle.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, well, I have to bring this up because year after year, I'm a supporter of the rates and the rates going up and not going up as much as the forecast being met. Because I can remember very well, it's got here in MRCC, did not receive $18 million in federal assistance grants when they were capped from 2013 to 2019. That's terrific that that's in there. I know that councillor Modica keeps on talking about all this rhetoric in here, infinitum, and it's good to see it for once in paper, in paper form. And it just shows to the community the difficulties that we have had over the years in regards to trying to provide the right rate base for the community and trying to provide the community with the lifestyle that they're accustomed to. So I too am in great support of this, this motion. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Eccle. And I think it's important to point out that we need to point out the fact that the lifestyle that they're not used to either, that's where we need the extra money. So councillor Modica, do you have anything, mayor Modica, anything else to say before we put it to vote?
I just will make sure, because there's so much information, that I'll go back through and check myself and hopefully with the staff, make sure if there are any little errors in there that we'll get on top of them for the benefit of the motion as it proceeds from here. So thank you, everybody.
Thank you. I'll now put the motion to vote. All in favour? The motion is carried unanimously too, by the way. 12.3 Murray Basin Rail Project.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to withdraw the following two motions at this stage. Well, for this month anyway, given that a report will come to council next month and also to the forum beforehand along the similar lines. So I'm happy to hold fire and have a look at that report and work out where we go from there. So I think it's best rather than have a report follow up. Like, this is an important issue. Rail is very important. We're losing freight on rail. We need to have our railway line upgraded, we all know that. But yeah, I think another four weeks isn't going to make that much difference. So if, with your permission, if we can hold these over or withdraw them because it may be a different motion next month anyway. So I'll just happy to withdraw them.
Thank you, councillor Millen. So items 12.3 and 12.4 are withdrawn? Thank you. We move on to item 13, petitions, joint letters and deputations. There are no petitions, joint letters or deputations tonight. 14, management reports. We'll now move on to considering management reports. 14.1 councillor's expenses report, 1st of January 2022, 31st of March 2022. And the recommendation is that councillors note that the contents of this report, which details councillor expenses for the period of the 1st of January 2022 to the 31st of March 2022. Do I have a mover for this motion? Deputy Mayor Modica? Do I have a seconder? Councillor Millen? Would anyone like to speak against the motion? Would anyone like to speak for the motion? I'll now put the motion to vote. All in favour? The motion is carried. 14.2 Recreation Assistance Grant Programme 2022/23, recommendations for funding. Recommendation that council approve the following grant applications totaling $196,938.33, GST exclusive, for funding through Recreation Assistance Grants Programme 2022/23 as presented in the tables. Councillor Eccle?
Mr. Mayor?
Yep, mover of councillor Eccle. Second, councillor Millen? Would anyone like to speak against the motion? Would anyone like to speak for the motion? Councillor Eccle?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, it's just important to bring to the community's notice the social and economic implications of this motion this evening. Provision of the Recreation Assistance Grants Programme recognizes the importance of sport and recreation in fostering social and community engagement and development of strong and resilient communities and the general health and wellbeing of the communities and individuals. And two projects will support increased participation of females. The economic ramifications is that council's Recreation Assistance Grants Programme funding for this round in partnership with recipient group contributions will result in more than $500,000 being contributed to the local sport and recreation community. The other thing I'd like to say in closing, Mr. Mayor, is that congratulate staff for working so closely with the applicants. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Eccle. CEO Martin Horsen?
Three, Mr. Mayor. I've just realised my daughter is a member of the Wanderers Hockey Club under 14s. So I'll just leave the room in declaring a indirect conflict. Thank you.
Would anyone else like to speak for the motion? Yes, councillor Millen?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I'd just like to note some money going there to Eagles Baseball. Not Eagles specifically, but baseball in general.
I thought it was the amateurs, councillor Millen.
Given that we've had the national competition running, which I think hopefully finished today, I don't think they got washed out, which was fantastic. There's people from right across the country there, all ages, playing baseball and playing some very good baseball. Baseball tends to sort of fly under the radar a little bit. But, you know, there's a national competition being held in Muldura and that's fantastic for them and fantastic that we're supporting baseball, so.
Yeah, and just quickly, on a side note for that competition, there's been a few letters being sent in to commend the council and the conditions of the fields and arrows. So well done to council staff. Would anyone else like to speak for the motion? I'll now put the motion to vote. All in favour? The motion is carried. You get our CEO back? The motion was carried. I'll now move on to item 14.3. Councillor Healy?
I'd like to declare a conflict of interest for the next item.
That's okay. Can you just wait for three minutes? We may have an issue with conflicts of interest, that's all.
Sure.
I too have a conflict of interest and I'll wait too, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I too have a conflict of interest, Mr. Mayor, but I'm prepared to wait.
There's definitely, there's definitely an echo in here, that's for sure. And I also have a conflict of interest. So given the amount of items with the conflicts of interest, it looks like we will lose a quorum for this item. And on that basis, in accordance with the Local Government Act 2020 and our governance rules, we may have to resolve to consider this item in an alternative manner by dividing these items into parts. Can I have a motion to split these items into parts and consider part one as a separate item to part two? Do I have a mover? Councillor De Perry? A seconder? Councillor Millen? That's all right, we're working in a democratic society, mate. Would anyone like to speak against the motion? I'll now put the motion to vote that we split the parts. All in favour? The motion is carried. So on that note, I do have a conflict at the first part and councillor Modica and councillor De Perry do as well. So is there a nomination for a councillor to be elected chair for this item?
Mr. Mayor, could you explain which bits are going to be the first and second part? So people know which ones they've got conflicts in.
Yeah, I'll get to that. So 14.3, item one, is the North West Victorian Motorcycle Club, Arts Muldura, Muldura and District Ski Club and Muldura City Heart, with a total funding recommended of $128,750. Are we okay with that? Yep. So if I can get a councillor to be elected as acting chair for the first part of 14.3?
Mayor Wood, could I nominate councillor Healy for that, please?
Certainly.
Thank you, councillor Reynolds, but I would like to nominate you.
Oh.
I have a conflict.
You don't have a conflict in the first.
You got a conflict.
Councillor Eccle?
Accept, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, I now put that motion to vote. All in favour? Thank you, councillor Eccle. You are now the chair. I'll leave the room for this item. Thank you. And sorry, I have a conflict of interest because of Muldura City Heart. I have a business in that area. Thank you.
I have a conflict because my partner Danielle Hobbs is the manager of Muldura City Heart.
I have a conflict because I'm an observer on the Arts Muldura Board.
I have a conflict, Mr. Mayor, because like you, I've got a business in the city. I'm also a life member of Arts Muldura.
Thank you.
Thank you, councillors. With the split, we're conversant with the, as the mayor has just indicated, that we're dealing with 14.3 and the first part of that, which states that council approved three-year funding agreements for the following grant applications with funding for 2022/23, totaling $128,750 GST exclusive through the Events Funding and Support Grants Programme 2022/23 and subsequent funding in accordance with the grant agreement as presented in the table below. Do I have a mover? Councillor Millen? Do I have a seconder? Councillor Reynolds? Anybody like to object to the motion? No objectors. So those in favour of the motion, please raise your hands. It's unanimous. Thank you. So we can have the mayor re-enter. Thank you, Mr. GM.
Anybody think you've done it before, Mark?
How do we go, Mark?
Unanimous, Mr. Mayor, that it was passed.
Thank you. Okay, we now move on to item 14.32, and approve the following grants application totaling $143,000 GST exclusive of funding through the Events Funding and Support Grants Programme 2022/23 as presented in the tables. Councillor Eccle?
Conflict, Mr. Mayor?
Type?
Can I, can you indulge me and I'll tell you the type and why? Because of the past issues in regards to me being in the room of this particular motion being passed previously.
Certainly, but if we can keep it to-
Yeah, five minutes. Okay. Well, Mr. Mayor, the issue is that I am a member of the Muldura Bowls Club and they are receiving money for their Muldura Bowls Carnival, which they have over numerous years. And under the Local Government Act of 1989, previous to 2020, being a member of a club or other community organisation was not regarded by itself as being a grounds for a conflict of interest. However, the current Local Government Act 2020 is less prescriptive in its guidance of a conflict of interest and therefore can be seen more open to interpretation. So under section 127.1, which I'm declaring a conflict of interest, the councillor has a general conflict of interest in a matter if an impartial, fair-minded person would consider that the person's private interests could result in that person acting in a manner that is contrary to their public duty. And I've had, I just want the councillors to know that I've had no interest in the application from the Muldura Bowls Club, only being a member. But the reason I'm pulling out is that I'm likely to compete in the carnival. So it's a long bow, but I'm not taking the chance of the perceived conflict of interest. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Eccle. Councillor De Perry?
Yeah, mine is simple. I'm a member of the Board of Writers Festival.
No, that's this one. Yes, they're all together. So I was waiting for you to, councillor Healy.
I thought you were dividing them into three, not two, sorry. I have a conflict of interest because I am a committee member of Muldura Writers Festival and a consultant for the Australian Alternative Writers Wine Show.
Thank you, councillor Healy. CEO Martin Horsen?
Three, Mr. Mayor. I too have a general conflict of interest because I'm a member of the Muldura Speedway Drivers Club and councillor Eccle has explained all that to us.
In depth. Thank you. And it just goes to show that, you know, conflicts of interest aren't something to shy away. It just shows that you're a part of the community and it's a good thing to see people leave this room and knowing that they are a part of the community. So I thank the people that aren't in the room and I also thank the people that are in the room. Often councillor Millen is absent many times, so. I will now put this, do I have a mover for this motion? Deputy Mayor Modica? Do I have a seconder? Councillor Millen? Would anyone like to speak against the motion? Would anyone like to speak for the motion? Councillor Millen?
Again, I'd just like to name Pine Plains Lodge, which many people may not know where it is unfortunately because it is a fantastic place. It's out in the, in the, the, what is it? The forest? Anyway, it's Apache Wally, if you head out of Apache Wally. Whippafield National Park, that's the one. And look, Camp oven cook off, if you can get out there, I'm sure it'd be fantastic. It's a fantastic part of our municipality that a lot of people don't realise and it's a great place to visit. So good on Pine Plains Lodge for running that and any meals that I've had out there in the camp ovens are sensational. So all the best to them.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak for the motion? I'd just quickly like to say it's a huge effort by council as well for all this funding, both, both agreements. Without the funding from council, many of these organisations wouldn't be able to survive. And I also thank those groups for putting in their submissions because it's really important for the community. So thank you to both parties. I'll now put the motion to vote. All in favour? The motion is carried. Thank you. For those who left the room, the motion was carried unanimously. I'll now move on to item 14.4, age care reforms. And this has been a topic that's been with us for quite some time and a very serious one and one that, you know, we've, we've considered very much so. It's a huge, huge step. So I'll now read out the recommendation in full because I think it's very important too. So number one, resolve to transition out of direct service delivery roles in the following programmes by 30th of June 2023. A, all funded Commonwealth Home Support Programme, CHSP Services. B, all home and community care programme for young people. Funded Services, C, Veterans Home Care Services and D, Brokehead Services. Item two, commit to the home care transition values and principles to underpin and support decision-making through the transition process. Three, resolve to work through, work with the Commonwealth and Victorian governments to negotiate timing and transition processes that will protect the interest of clients, their families, valued staff and the broader community. Item four, resolve to play an active role in supporting the community in receiving high-quality age care services and advocate for the needs of vulnerable members of the community. Item five, resolve to realign policy direction towards future investment in age-friendly or positive aging initiatives and to ensure that council's universal services and facilities are designed to meet the needs of a growing population of older residents. And item six, resolve to provide delegated, delegated authorities to the chief executive officer or their nominee to undertake or commission all tasks and activities related to the implementation of the council decision. And item seven, approve notification of its decision to, A, clients and families, B, staff and union representatives, C, media and other communications, D, broader community. Item eight, resolve, resolved to fund a community health and wellbeing officer to support the implementation of the Community Health and Wellbeing Plan. And nine, resolve to fund an aged care service navigator to support customer and community through the first 12 months of the new Support at Home programme launch. Do I have a mover for this motion? Councillor Reynolds, do I have a seconda? Councillor Milne? Would anyone like to speak against the motion? Would anyone like to speak for the motion? Councillor Healy?
Thank you Mayor Wood. Really, I'm speaking for it with a heavy heart because I have been a recipient of, not because of my age, but because of my mum, the age care service and seeing what a tremendous service it has been. And in supporting it, I'd just like to acknowledge the work of the age care sector from Muldura Royal City Council and the magnificent work they've done over time and look forward to seeing how we can implement supporting better health and outcomes for our age population without delivering this specific service. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Healy. Would anyone else like to speak for the motion? Councillor Eccle?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Mr Mayor, I just want to make a, a quick statement on this because I've followed it through over numerous years. And in the time that I've been on, in council, this is undoubtedly one of the most important decisions council has made in my time. And, and I believe that, that the council will make, this council will make into the future. So because I knew how important a decision this was and I've got to tell you that I was on the, the ACOP, which is unfortunately not around anymore, but the Advisory Council for Older People. And I've followed our seniors through all those years and tried to be there for them and even taking phone calls at 11 o'clock at night during those early years because I, I felt for them. So I've followed this very, very closely and I've attended, I don't think there's a session that I haven't attended over the years when council has provided numerous forums on, on this issue and I thank council for that. And in recent times, I've attended consultations, public consultations as well that the, that the council has conducted. And there have been people that have come forward with real concerns. And I wouldn't be voting for this tonight if there was a concern in my heart that the people of Muldura were not going to be serviced correctly into the future. But not only that, I think it's this transitional period and this is what I gained from listening to the staff and the, and the, the explanations they gave to people that had concerns, that the transitional period will be very settling for people in this area that, that use these services. So I implore them to, as council officers did at these sessions, to come forward if they have got any concerns whatsoever with this, with this decision that will possibly be made tonight. So I just want to say, same as councillor Healy, to a certain extent with a heavy heart because I know how much our staff really are devoted to their job in this particular area. But I also know that this really will be for the best into the future. And, and I'd like all the seniors in the area, in our municipality to know that we have their interest at heart and would like them to be reassured that if they have got any issues in regards to this reform, that they come to council. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you councillor Eccle. Councillor Milne?
Yeah, thanks, Mr Mayor. I'd just like to say briefly that it is a big move and of course people, when you're provided with services from A service, you get to know the staff and those that are helping you and it becomes very personal having people in your house. And that does make it difficult, but the other side of the equation does need to be looked at by council and that is a requirement for competitive neutrality, where there are other businesses and organisations that are wanting to provide the service, that are able to provide the service. And, you know, councils aren't allowed to use ratepayers' money to fund that service, to, to compete with our local businesses. And probably in this case, there might be some that aren't local, but what it boils down to is that our cost is $84.80 an hour and the government is saying that, you know, they want it to be $50 an hour and that's what other services are providing it for. So that equates to an $800,000 subsidy by the ratepayers. So that's out of our rates. So we have to consider that and that's really what it boils down to. And that's why we have to make this decision. And, you know, you're really left with no option, but there is a financial game for the community and as councillor Eccle has said, look, it'll be hard for some of the people, but from what I understand and what I know, there's a lot of other good services out there and indeed a lot of very, very capable workers and caring workers that will take up the gaps and probably will provide employment for those workers that have been working for council. So we'll just have to watch and work through it with the community, but we're really left with no choice anyway.
Thank you councillor Milne. Would anyone else like, councillor Reynolds?
Thank you Mayor Wood. I'd have to agree with my fellow councillors in their assessment of the situation. I'd just like to add that my thanks to the staff for keeping us so well informed over the course of this process. It's made it a debate that we can have with all of the information at our fingertips. So thank you for that. It's also made the resulting motion really comprehensive. So we've covered that transition period, those two last parts of the motion where we employ somebody to help people navigate that last part of the process are both really, really important parts of this motion. And we can thank Cherie Jukes for the engagement process that she ran with people and anybody that's in this space can be reassured that Cherie Jukes will, will have your back and so will the council. So thank you.
Thank you councillor Reynolds. Would anyone, councillor Bailey?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I would also like to agree with everything the councillors have said. Working in the health space, this, this is not new. This has been happening to a lot of services over the years. A change in funding structure, you know, we have to adapt. This is a very common scenario and there are, as councillor Milne has said, there's a lot of businesses that are now popping up to, to fill the gap and to take on the services. Ones that are a lot smaller, more efficient. Because we've seen that this, larger organisations find it much harder to be efficient and cost-cut, cut costs. So this to me looks like a very wise move, a process that's happening everywhere. It's happening with the NDIS. All health services are experiencing this. And I think the, the service community at, at large is prepared to, to handle it and they'll, they'll support these people.
Thank you councillor Bailey. Anyone else would like to say anything for it? I'd just quickly like to echo councillor Reynolds' sentiment with Cherie and her team. They've put in a massive effort, seen it firsthand with the consultation period. And, and as councillor Reynolds said, that's, that's in the motion. And that's from community feedback as well as client feedback. And without that client and community feedback, this motion would look a hell of a lot different. So thank you to Cherie and her team and we, and the continued work that she, she will do and the team in this space until, until handover and probably well beyond that as well. So just a big thank you. I will now put the motion to vote. All in favour? The motion is carried.
We're just having a battery issue with the air's computer, but I'm sure...
Not my battery. I just like... We move on to item 14.5, adoption of community banner programme policy CP077 and the recommendation that council adopt the new community banner programme policy CP077 as present. Moving or asking question? Okay, we'll, we'll see it. Just let, let me, let me get there. Do we have a mover? Oh, sorry, councillor Milne, yes.
The punch. Seconda, Mr Mayor?
Let, let me speak and then you can, yeah. Seconda? Deputy Mayor Morica, okay. Would anyone like to speak against? No, we're jumping the gun again? Okay. Would anyone like to speak for the motion? Councillor, councillor Milne?
Yes, thanks, Mr Mayor. Very excited to see that we've got a very simple way to raise banners. This has been a problem for many, many years. There's been complaints about the lack of decoration on, on Deacon Avenue and also concern from council with the cost to get our banners up and the RHS issues and all the rest of it, the traffic issues. And these banner mechanisms, I think I saw them in Canberra about, I don't know, 10 years ago or something, got all excited and brought some pamphlets home. But it's just great to see it happening and I think it'll be appreciated by everybody because if you look at the bridge, there's all sorts of banners go up there and it just looks fantastic coming, coming over the bridge. And to have that in Deacon Avenue will really just bring another, I guess, dimension to our events and whatever's happening in town. And hopefully we can continue that ride out to maybe 15th Street at some stage because, yeah, it just makes the town look loved and a little bit exciting when you turn into the main street and there's banners telling you whatever's on. So, yeah, and thank you again for the staff for getting it done. And I know there's a few people, a few businesspeople in town that are a little bit excited to see it. They've been driving us crazy for about the last three years, almost on a weekly basis. In fact, my phone was ringing before, so I know there's one man very happy to see it.
Thank you councillor Milne. Councillor Eccle?
Well, what can I say? I've got to endorse what councillor Milne said because I don't know about the last three years, councillor Milne. This has been an issue for years and years and years. And unfortunately, with the, the way that our polls were initially and, and what it costs to put flags up and all that, well, we seem to have overcome all that. And I just think for a, an agenda item which only goes for three pages, it's a fantastic policy and all event coordinators will be delightful about this. And as the report says, the banners may be booked for a four-week period. Longer bookings may be granted on a case, by case basis. And I'd say the phones will be ringing. And the Christmas decorations, yes, that's got its own line down there. So Mr Green will be happy. Thank you.
He just resorted back to your radio voice there or? Would anyone else like, councillor Healy?
Thank you, Mayor Wood. As somebody who was putting banners up and down for 12 years to mark a festival beginning for many years, I think it's fabulous and I also think it's so affordable for groups to put them up and down. I'd just like to encourage, as I've brought up before, that we look into any chance of them being produced locally rather than outside town. But otherwise, I'm so in favour of this. It's wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Healy. Anyone else like to speak for the motion? I'll now put the motion to vote. All in favour? The motion is carried. Item 14.6, Early Years Infrastructure Plan. Recommendation that council, one, adopt the Early Years Infrastructure Plan 2022 to 31 as presented. Item two, utilise the Early Years Infrastructure Plan 2022 to 31 as guide to related planning and financial investments decisions. And three, utilise the Early Years Infrastructure Plan 2022 to 31 to advocate for planning and future development of early years infrastructure. Do I have a mover for this motion? Councillor Reynolds, do I have a seconda? Deputy Mayor Morica? Would anyone like to speak against the motion? Would anyone like to speak for the motion? Councillor Reynolds?
Thank you, Mayor Wood. Once again, this is just a great example of staff being aware of changes that are, that are going to be occurring and getting on the front foot and making sure that we're ready for those changes and ready to support the people who need those services in Muldura. So cheers. Well done.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak for the motion? Anyone else like to speak for the motion? I'll now put the motion to vote. All in favour? The motion is carried. Item 14.7, Amendment to C104 MILD Planning Scheme Review and Planning Policy Framework, translation, adoption of amendment, recommendation that council adopt amendment C104 MILD as exhibited subject to changes in accordance to the recommendations of the independent panel and forward to the Minister of Planning requesting approval. Do I have a mover for this motion? Councillor Modica? Do I have a seconder for this motion? Councillor Reynolds? Would anyone like to speak against the motion? Would anyone like to speak for the motion? Deputy Mayor Modica?
Yeah, look, I just, once again, this is a huge piece of work that's gone over multiple years in multiple councils. And I read through it twice, so I'm quite, I'm amazed at how intricate planning becomes as you read through it more and more again. So what's gone on, what's been done, some of the work done here is very, very simple, some is very complex, but it just sets us in train to make sure that we're revising the planning issues that come to us and we have a deeper understanding of how we grow, how we continue to grow through this period of growth, if you can grow through a period of growth, I apologise for that. But yeah, thank you to the staff, thank you for the interaction with DLP, thank you for the advisers and the people that help us out of town when we need to get a little bit of expert advice. It's a phenomenal document and it'll put us in good stead. Thank you.
Sorry, councillor Oney, have I missed you? You would like to speak for or against?
I actually have a few questions. Please, Mayor Wood.
Certainly.
On page 161, I think it's the second last paragraph, there are figures mentioned regarding the number of blocks that we have available for dwellings. And it says that currently there are 6,000. And then it mentions about an infill at Mildura, Iremple, Red Cliffs, which provides another 4,350, currently giving us 10,350 before we look at Mildura East growth area. I'm just wondering if someone can clarify that for me, please?
Acting General Manager of Community, Mark Jenkins?
Those would be indicative numbers, I think, provided to the panel as a guide to what potential development dwellings could be extracted from those locations. So that would be the basis of those numbers. And considering, sorry, is that right? Go.
On the basis of that, does that mean that also the sentence regarding the 15 to 18 year supply before we even look at Mildura East growth area is correct?
Yeah, based on the advice to the panel, that's correct. And again, it would depend on demand. That is, again, is based on current demand numbers and obviously the estimates because it is based on the yield from zoned land, which is not really determined until, you know, development plans are finalised and adopted by council.
Okay, thank you. And the last question is that Murbane seems to be missed, refers to Iremple, Mildura, Red Cliffs, Nichols Point. But there's, it mentions in this plan that Murbane will be included, but there's no mention of the blocks at Murbane. I just wonder if that's because all the blocks are sold or there's land going to be opened up? Or what's the circumstances there, please?
Yeah, I did note that Murbane is not mentioned and I can only make a bit of assessment on the run here that the numbers there are probably a little bit lower than the numbers provided here for some of these townships. But potentially, demand is a touch lower, but certainly can probably take that on notice, I think, and provide more clarification about Murbane, what the actual numbers are.
Okay, thank you.
Councillor Mill?
Just one question to Mr Jenkins on that. Have we got a definition for demand? Because if that's the only land available, then you're sort of forced to live there. So, you know, is there demand for land in other areas or are people channelled into that area because they haven't got another option?
There is obviously an attempt to maintain diversity and option. So that is the overall goal, always to provide options and diversity of choice. So even with the Red Cliffs having such significant potential, that sort of gives everyone the option to, I suppose, to make a choice to a degree. Obviously it doesn't mean you can live anywhere, but certainly gives you options in terms of, you know, in development fronts where you might choose to live.
Councillor Oney, do you have any more questions?
No, thank you, Mr Mayor. That's all I have.
Councillor Bailey?
I've got to.
You've got to be.
Somewhere else.
Yep, okay, thank you for your time. Actually, what we might do is put the vote first before we go councillor Bailey, if that's okay. Would anyone like to speak for the motion? I'll now put the motion to vote. All in favour? The motion is carried, thank you. Thank you, councillor Bailey. Item 14.8, Quarterly Financial Management Report, March 2022, recommendation that council notes the contents of the quarterly financial management report for the period ending 31st of March 2022. Do I have a mover for this motion? Councillor Mill? Question?
Yeah, just with the recent announcement of power hikes, is there any indication of how that might impact on our budget and maybe into the coming year and how that will impact on our larger buildings, council building, Mildura South?
General Manager of Corporate, Chris Byrne?
Thank you. Yeah, very good question, based on the recent announcements. I guess there's a couple of perspectives here. One is the investment that council has in renewable energy and the use of solar panels and, you know, the sort of gas, I guess you could say, in terms of some of the other facilities as well. We do, in terms of the power agreements that we have, there are some parameters within those agreements to allow for fluctuations and the longer term contracts that we have that council has signed up to. There is, I guess you could say, a ceiling within those and the way that we budget is to take that into account. So do I anticipate any major change to our draft budget for the coming years based on power costs? No, I don't.
Thanks, Mr Byrne.
Questions, Mr Mayor?
Councillor Eccle?
Yeah, thank you, Mr Mayor. Mr Mayor, about this time each year, we have a surplus that looks quite astounding. So I think with 36.03 million, we might need to just give the community an explanation, clarification of why it sits at that particular amount at this time of the year.
General Manager of Corporate, Chris Byrne?
Thank you for the question through the mayor. That is a very good question, I'll welcome it, thank you. It really comes down to what we often refer to as a timing difference in that the 30th of June from a financial reporting perspective is simply a period in time, it's a point in time. However, the reality is that many of our capital and operational projects go beyond that period. So where we have, for example, major capital projects such as the Powerhouse or the Mildura Sporting Precinct, these are multi-year projects, they're budgeted as multi-year projects. And some instances, we receive grant funding in advance as well, but we have to recognise that grant funding. And so as of the 30th of June, we might be showing a surplus. However, when it comes to our actual capital works programme and as a council and as per most councils, we always strive to achieve what we call a balanced budget, where our expenditure equals our income. But the 30th of June just being a point in time doesn't necessarily line up with the completion of our projects or the receipt of our income.
So I'll now, do I have a mover for this motion? Ken? Yeah, do I have a seconder for the motion? Deputy Mayor Modica? Would anyone like to speak against the motion? Would anyone like to speak for the motion? I'll now put the motion to vote. All in favour? The motion is carried. Item 14.9, Mildura City Heart.
Mayor Wood, I have a conflict of interest with this one. My partner Danielle Hobbs runs Mildura City Heart, so I'll have to remove myself from this.
Thank you. You want to announce it?
Yes, I've got a business in the town, so I have a conflict of interest.
Thank you. I also have a conflict of interest as well, so we're going well tonight. So we will need to nominate a chair as well. So is there a nomination for councils to be elected acting chair for this item?
Mr Mayor, I'll suggest councillor Millen.
Councillor Millen?
I'm happy to do that. Thanks, Mr Mayor.
Okay, I will now like to put the motion forward that councillor Millen take the chair. All in favour? The motion is carried. Thank you, councillor Millen, you can take the chair and I'll leave the room for this item. Oh, sorry, a second. Yeah, councillor Reynolds? All who's in favour? Motion is carried.
Okay, item 14.9 is Mildura City Heart Business Plan Update 2022-23, financial estimates for 2022 and 2023 and annual business plan for 2022 to 2023 as presented. The recommendation is that council endorse the Mildura City Heart Incorporated half-yearly report on the annual business plan 2021 to 22, the financial estimates 2022 to 23 and the annual business plan 2022 to 2023 as presented. So have we got a mover for that, please?
Thank you, councillor Healy. Have we got a seconder? My mind's gone blank. Thank you, councillor Reynolds. I was going to say councillor Jody. Has anybody wished to speak against the motion? Anybody like to speak for the motion? I'll put the motion, those in favour, those against the motion is carried. If we can have everybody back in the room, please? Screw with the big riding. The motion was carried. I was going to say unanimously, but well, all five of us or whatever was elected. We now move on to item 14.10, Mildura Airport Proprietary Limited MAPLE Annual Business Plan 2022 to 2023, recommendation that council endorse the Mildura Airport Proprietary Limited MAPLE Annual Business Plan 2022-2023 as presented. Do I have a mover for this motion? Councillor Healy? Do I have a seconder? Deputy Mayor Modica? Would anyone like to speak against the motion? Would anyone like to speak for the motion? Councillor Healy?
Just briefly, Mayor Wood, I just want to recommend, not recommend, commend the business of the airport in view of the chair and the CEO and how they've delivered a good business plan and acknowledged the struggle they've had the last two years in relation to the downfall in travel related to Covid and see a great emphasis in this plan on continued recovery post-Covid. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Healy. Would anyone else like to speak for the motion? I'll now put the motion to vote. All in favour? The motion is carried. Item 14.11, Mildura Regional Development Annual Business Plan 2022-2023, the recommendation that council endorse the Mildura Regional Development Annual Business Plan 2022-2023 as presented. Do I have a mover? Councillor Millen? A seconder? Councillor De Pieri? Would anyone like to speak against the motion? Would anyone like to speak for the motion? Councillor Millen?
I'd just like to acknowledge the work that's put into this and the work that MRD do for council, their economic arm and, you know, we all know how much work it is to develop the annual business plan and we've got some great events and some great work coming up with various businesses and, you know, the team around there, I know that every time I go around, they're always excited about Mildura and about its future. So they're doing a great job helping us and, yeah, just give them a pat on the back and thank them for all their work and particularly their board. There's a lot of time put in, you know, by boards, volunteers, and we need to acknowledge that because I know the amount of work that the busy businesspeople behind this do and very much appreciate the time that they give up to make sure that the job gets done. So thank you to them.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak for the motion? I'll now put the motion to vote. All in favour? The motion is carried. 14.12, Adoption of Waterway Manager Instrument of Delegation, recommendation that council, one, revoke the Waterway Manager Instrument of Delegation adopted by council on the 26th of August 2020. Item two, adopt the updated Waterway Manager Instrument of Delegation as presented and three, authorise all powers be delegated to members of the council staff, holding, acting in or performing the duties of officers or positions referred to in the attached instrument of delegation once adopted. Do I have a mover for this motion? Deputy Mayor Modica? Do I have a seconder? Councillor Reynolds? Would anyone like to speak against the motion? Would anyone like to speak for the motion? I'll now put the motion to vote. All in favour? The motion is carried. Item 14.13, Adoption of Children's Services Legislation Instrument of Delegation, recommendation that council, one, revoke the instrument of delegation, Children's Services, VIC and New South Wales legislation, adopted by council on 26th August 2020. Two, adopt the updated instrument of delegation, Children's Services, VIC, New South Wales legislation as presented and three, authorise all powers to be delegated to members of council staff, holding, acting and performing duties of officers or positions referred to in the attached instrument of delegation once adopted. Do I have a mover for this motion? Councillor De Pieri? Do I have a seconder? Councillor Millen? Would anyone like to speak against the motion? Would anyone like to speak for the motion? I'll now put the motion to vote. All in favour? The motion is carried. 14.14, Adoption of Asset Plan 2022-2031, recommendation that council adopt the Asset Plan 2022-2031 as presented. Do I have a mover? Councillor Healy? A seconder? Deputy Mayor Modica? Would anyone like to speak against the motion?
Got a question.
Councillor Millen, question?
I've got a question, thanks, Mr Mayor. And that's page 335. It's to do with the renewal gap. If we could get a little bit of an explanation, it's for people reading this report, I don't think they would really understand the renewal gap, but that's what, the money that we've got between what we're spending and what we need to spend. So if we can have a little bit of an explanation about that and where we're at currently.
we're at currently, I don't think the graphs don't quite show us very clear, you know, how much we're facing like this year, let alone for the next 10.
Acting General Manager of Development, Daryl Morgan?
Through you, Mr Mayor. The, and I'll just bring the page up. So just an explanation in terms of the renewal gap. What that is essentially telling us is what we need to spend on infrastructure in terms of making all our assets as per the plan, based on what we can afford to spend. And the gap is what we actually are not spending. So obviously as that goes on in time, we fall behind. In terms of the question around where we're at this stage, this point in time, I might take that one on notice and provide a bit more information back to council.
I'll also get General Manager Corporate, Chris Parham, to add to that. Thank you, Daryl.
Sorry, it was page 342, but my notes disappeared.
Your notes have gone?
They went, didn't they?
Thank you through the mayor. As Acting General Manager of Development mentioned, the renewal gap is really the difference between the amount of money that needs to be spent on the maintenance of our, in excess of $1 billion worth of assets, as opposed to the actual amount that we can contribute to the maintenance through the depreciation through our new budget process. So our annual spend on depreciation is approximately $18 million a year. However, that $18 million falls well short of the amount in the ideal world that we would spend on the maintenance of assets. As I guess people would understand, even with your car at home, for example, that if you don't maintain the assets, then over time they're going to deteriorate, break down on the actual cost of repairs is going to be significantly more. I don't have the current figures with me, but I believe across the state of Victoria, the current renewal gap is in the vicinity of, have to be close to about $300 million across all councils. This is not a situation which is unique to Muldura by any stretch of the imagination. But if I can refer back to Deputy Mayor Modica's comments in regards to the amount of assets that councils across Australia maintain and look after, as opposed to the amount of revenue and our revenue opportunities that we have, that we, across all local governments, simply do not have the amount of income that we need to actually maintain all our assets to a reasonable level. I hope that assists.
So the bottom line is we need more government funding or the wheels will fall off. Is that fair comment?
If I can respond by saying that Muldura Royal City Council needs further funding to invest into its existing asset base.
Would anyone like to speak for the motion? Councillor Healy?
Thank you. Yeah, it's a good report and it was good to read. But as councillor Milne has brought up and manager Parham has referred to, it really hooks in very clearly to councillor Modica's motion around the funding gap. I was surprised to read that if we were to replace all our assets, it would cost over $1 billion. And unlike other council areas, like we have nine pools, 273 playgrounds, over 5,000 kilometres in roads, and we have to maintain these and operate these, renew these, upgrade and expand and build new ones. So I draw attention to, as councillor Milne has, that we have a renewal amount required and we have a renewal amount available and we have a massive gap. And I thank councillor Modica for his motion that will lobby for us to get more in the financial assistance grants. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Healy. Would anyone else like to speak for it? Councillor, Deputy Mayor Modica?
Yeah, I think it's a great report. And I was going to point out what councillor Healy's pointed out with the volume of assets we have and the variability of them and the different resources required and skills required to attend to them if there are issues. The other thing that struck me is how trying to put together and understand the complexity of what we do is I love the piece in this report that we're a provider, we're a regulator, we're a partner, we're a facilitator and we're an advocate. So it really puts us in this central position of receiving the information you mightn't want to, being able to distill it and getting it to our staff and then trying to get it back out into the community. I was pretty excited about this report last year. There was a version of one this last year, I think, and this is the first one. And it's just phenomenal to think that we take charge of this and we do it very, very well, to follow up with councillor De Pieri said earlier, under very difficult circumstances. And to follow up from the motion earlier, you know, there's a $300 million asset gap in Victoria, but there's $11 billion subsidies to fossil fuel companies. Now, I don't think that needs to change. Well, if you wanted to scream to the rooftops, you could call it to change straight away. But there are inequities there. And it's been explored in so many agenda items tonight. It is becoming quite a concern. So great report, great work by the staff, great work for the community to keep us on our toes and keep us informed of the things that they like and dislike happening. So well done, a great report.
Would anyone else like to speak for the motion? Councillor Milne?
Just one further quick comment. Again, on the renewal gap, I think it's good for members of the community to actually take a good read of this document because, one, because of the time, the comprehensiveness of the report, but also to have a look at those graphs and particularly the grey area that says the renewal gap over time, because that will explain why you're not getting a brand new footpath out the front of your house, why you might have to wait for a drain to be fixed, why you might have to wait for a pothole or even for Castle's Crossing Road to be built. Because what we've got to play with and what we need to play with, there's a big gap between that and it's getting bigger. So people need to understand that. And at the moment, the only way you could fill that gap is put the rates up. And that's really not a popular move. So, yeah, if our community can read it and understand it, that sort of, when you look at that grey area and the hugeness of where it's going, that helps you understand why you can't have all the things that you want and need.
Thank you, councillor Milne. Would anyone else like to speak for the motion? And I think that's the unfortunate rate conversation that we have. And that shines a light on it. That renewal gap is huge and unfortunate and someone's got to pay for it. I will now put the motion to vote. All in favour? The motion is carried. Thank you. Item 14.15, Adoption of the S11A Instrument of Appointment and Authorization. Recommendation that council adopt the S11A Instrument of Appointment and Authorization document as presented for Andrea Collins' Principal Statutory Planner. Do I have a mover for this motion? Deputy Mayor Modica? Do I have a seconder? Do I have a seconder? Councillor De Pieri? Would anyone like to speak against the motion? Sorry?
This is the first time I've seen the agenda item. So it's obviously late. Does it have to, a motion to accept it into business?
Okay, well, so we'll have to put a motion towards, to accept item 14.15. Do I have a mover for that? Councillor, Deputy Mayor Modica, do I have a seconder? Councillor Healy, does anyone like to speak against the motion? Has everyone else seen this supplementary item?
I can't even open it.
Has anyone not seen it? Are you voting against it? Being?
If I knew what it was, I would. I've got no problem. It's a fairly simple motion. So, yeah, I won't have a problem with that.
Okay. So I now put the motion to vote to accept this into the agenda, 14.15. All in favour? The motion is carried. I will now read back through it. So the council adopted S11A Instrument of Appointment and Authorization document as presented for Andrea Collins' Principal Statutory Planner. Do I have a mover for this motion? Deputy Mayor Modica, do I have a seconder? Councillor Eccle? Would anyone like to speak against the motion? Would anyone like to speak for the motion? I'll now put the motion to vote. All in favour? The motion is carried. Item 15, Urgent Business. There is no urgent business tonight. Item 16, Community Questions. And there has been three community questions submitted for tonight's meeting. So I'll now hand over to Acting General Manager Daryl Morgan to read out the question and follow it up with the response.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. The question from Sun Rages Rate Pays Association regarding the Deacon Avenue Centre Medien redevelopment, the Stage Two project. And the question was raised by a community member about the progress of this project that commenced according to the council website in May 2021 and should have subsequently been completed September 2021. Why then is the fountain on Deacon Avenue still covered by scaffolding and why is there a delay in the project completion? This is of great concern as the fountain is a prime tourist attraction and local and international tourists come from all over the state to view the fountain, among other attractions in Muldura, and are disappointed at being able to not see this firsthand. An explanation for the delay would be appreciated. The response is the Stage Two council works for Deacon Avenue from 8th to 9th Street were signed off as completed in October 2021. Other than the underground electrical works, the fountain and rotunda restoration, they were not in the initial scope of work. So this was essentially a separate project which did not commence until the redevelopment of the other works were completed. The stripping back and painting of the fountain was intended to take approximately two weeks. However, the basin of the fountain was found to be badly in need of further repair and this has extended that work by another week. So in total, the scaffolding will be in place for approximately three weeks. And this treatment has also been subject to oversight by our heritage adviser. And unfortunately, due to Covid restrictions, this has caused some delays in him being able to visit the region. In regards to the rotunda, this can't also be restored without the guidance of the heritage adviser. And there has been a meeting scheduled in the next week or two. So once that's occurred, then hopefully the restoration works can occur in the next financial year.
Do you have any other questions?
That was the only one.
Okay. I'll now hand over to Acting General Manager of Community, Mark Jenkins.
I have a question from community member Lisa Calipari regarding Muldura East. I'll read the question first. In regards, again, sorry, two questions, I think this is the first one. In regards to item 14.2 from April's MRCC council agenda, how can council and councillors justify the allowance of this plan, which so much land dedicated to a green wedge, when we are encircled by a green wedge already zoomed out on Google Maps, considering the housing shortage, rental home shares in Muldura and surrounding areas, with not enough homes for singles, couples and families? So the Muldura East Growth Area Strategic Framework provides very long-term direction for the provision of land for residential development. The framework proposes land for visual development and land that would remain farming zone. And that's the reference to the green wedge. Council's role in this project is to ensure adequate supply of developable land. And there are various other factors that affect housing supply. Many of the responsibilities they show with provision of housing reside with both state and federal government. The council can play an important advocacy role to the various levels of government regarding the provision of housing for all sectors of our community. And there was a second question from the same person. In regards to, going to item 14.2, why isn't Muldura East project utilise for much needed semi-rural or residential housing according to similar plans on the other side of town? Why is it being treated differently in regards to town planning? Examples such housing developments of Warna and Ontario Avenue, which is balance of parks and wetlands, residential living. It's beautiful, especially during a housing shortage at this community. So Muldura East Growth Area proposes a mix of larger and smaller residential format development. And the thorough town planning process is being undertaken. Muldura South, although not identical, involved a similar approach, development approach, as does to Muldura East. Like Muldura South, Muldura East proposes various parks, wetlands and open space for local residents to enjoy. And I probably would refer the author to the question to the Muldura East Growth Area Strategic Framework documents, which are available on the internet, for further information about, relating to the question. Thanks.
Thank you for the community questions. We will now move on to item 17, Confidential Business, which we have four items of confidential business to deal with tonight. As noted in the agenda, they are 17.1, Muldura Airport Proprietary Limited Loan Refinancing, 17.2, Tender Award Victorian Telecommunication Services Estate Purchase Contract, 17.3, CEO Matters, and 17.4, Appointment of Consultant for Muldura Heritage Study Part B, Stage Two. Do I have a mover for this motion? Deputy Mayor Modica, do I have a seconder? Councillor Milne? Would anyone like to speak against the motion? Would anyone like to speak for the motion? I'll now put the motion to vote. All in favour? The motion is carried. Thank you.